We call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled, called and convened Greer City Council meeting. We are duly assembled this evening, September the 27th, 2022, for our meeting and having called it to order. I'd like to ask Councilman Lee Dumas, if you would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious and most kind Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening that you've given us tonight. We thank you for this great city, all that it represented here. Lord, we know a lot of hurting right now in this season. There's a lot of sickness, pain, and people that are struggling right now. Lord, help us to be mindful of them tonight and be there in a special way for them. Be with us at this meeting. Help us to always do your will, always consider those, all those in the city, and help us to make those long-term decisions that will be pleasing and best in your sight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
So we set aside time at the first of each meeting for public forum, a time for citizens, and we have allowed others to speak in the past and will do so this evening. But for just a broad sort of overview of how we will do things this evening, I'm going to allow speakers up to three minutes. I will hold up a yellow piece of paper when you have one minute left and a red piece of paper when your time is up. I would ask you to be considerate of others' time as well, too, in your comments. We are going to change things up just a little bit. I will call your name. If you would, when you come to the podium, if you would, give us your name, an address, and then whether or not you are a resident of the city for our edification. That would be helpful. And so with that, we will start with Catherine Tinsley. She will be our first speaker this evening. Ms. Tinsley?
My name is Catherine Tinsley. I live at 321 Brammer Road. That is Greer. It is not in the city currently. My understanding is that AN 2214 is being considered tonight, and that is what I oppose and would like to share two and a half minutes of how I feel about that. I was fortunate enough to receive a couple of email responses for some emails that I sent out expressing my thoughts and feelings. And one of the councilmen who did take the time to reply to my email, which I very much appreciated, kind of chastised me a little bit for basically saying that I was averse to this and all other development in my area. And I want you to know the people that are represented in this box who are currently not city folks, but there's 50-plus asking for opposition to what's being considered tonight for our area, and that is Kissed Road, Gin House Road, and eventually we know that will back up to Brammer Road, the properties. So what I wanted to share to kind of open your eyes and just kind of give you a quick snapshot of what's going on in the county, if you're not aware, is that we have names and estimated units of new and relatively new within the last three years subdivisions less than five-mile radius of the area that we're talking about. So when we talk about growth and we talk about changes in our area, we are experiencing them greatly. There is Chestnut Grove, 173 units, Brammer Knoll, 50 units, Reserve at Redcroft, 50 units, Development at 296 and Kiss that's under development and currently not named, and no lots are separated. We have 110-plus new development right there on Abner Creek, Bird Quarry, 35, Mayfield Crossing, 85 units, Brookwood Estates, Creekside Manor, Brayburn Orchard, Perry Crossing, Anderson Grant, Redcroft, The Meadows at Brockman Farms, Overton Park, interesting, 75 units. They're all up for rent, so those are all rentals. Vines Creek, McIntosh, The Manor at Brockman Farms, that's about two miles radius, Franklin Point, Saddle Brook Farms, Timberwood, Orchards at Reedville, Divine Group is under development, DeYoung Meadows, Pelham Glen, and Dillard Creek. We've got lots of growth. The concern is infrastructure, streets, traffic, our quality of life, how that will be affected. So we appreciate you, and I appreciate anybody that'll pray before a meeting and ask for God's leading. I ask that you consider how we will be affected, quality of life in the future, how has it affected quality of life measures in the past, things like traffic, sewer, erosion, flooding, just to name a few. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Annette Bradley?
Yes, sir. My name is Annette Bradley. I live at 797 Kissed Road, and I also own property on Gin House Road, 370 Gin House Road. I oppose this strongly. It's too much, too fast. I'm not saying in the future, but these roads are under construction right now, and it's yet to be seen what we're going to get. And I was concerned about having a two-way-in, a one-way-in, two different roads. That brings in bad elements coming through. Lucky lose, as I call. And how about them getting in and out of that? And where it looks like they're going to be is right in a curve on Gin House Road? And it's a dangerous curve right now. I'm sure they're going to do some straightening, but I think you need to give us some time to get settled before we need any more developments at this time. We have plenty that aren't done yet, so we probably, the road that's being done now isn't going to support what we've got that has yet to be built, that's under construction. And I want to thank council for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John, and I'm going to take a stab at Lindsey maybe, but John?
John Tinsley, 321 Brammer Road. I am not a resident of the city. I'm intentionally moved to the county to be in the county. As Catherine pointed out, this is 56. This is every single person who lives on Gin House, Brammer, and Kiss. That, in my opinion, is a mandate from the people. We are not your constituents. We did not vote you in because we're outside the city limits, but we could very easily be in the city limits, it appears, very soon. We've been told that this is a second reading. This is news to us, all of us in the community. Our community just learned of this. Two days before the 19th, we all showed up at the planning committee. Had we known, we'd have been here. I want to make it clear that none of us come here with a hard heart or with any ill intent towards the council. We care about you guys, and we appreciate you, and we want to support you. But the notion that progress is inevitable and we should just go with it is foolish. We have had more than our share of progress. As Catherine pointed out, 10,000 people are living in 2,000 homes in 30 subdivisions within three miles. Three miles. You can't even go to Reed. That's all between us and Reedville. 10,000 people, 5,000 cars, if you look at the U.S. statistic for how many cars and how many people per household. These units that she described, they can't even sell them. The economy's going down. There is units that developers are trying to rent because they cannot sell them. In our community, within one mile of this development that's being proposed, they cannot sell them. So here we're talking about letting a new development happen, destroy the green space, destroy the wildlife, and our quality of life, I might add, so that we can do what? Let the corporations make more money and let them sit? These developments have been all done within the last three years. If you vote to approve this development, we're talking about 517.5 additional vehicles on our neighborhood streets. Our neighborhoods can't handle the new school they're putting in right now. Additionally, we have a witness that can testify to the road study. We feel like the developer has been untruthful about the road study and about the preparation. We know for a fact and have a witness that will say that the road study equipment was ineffective. The man had to leave, and he came back at dark. He put it installed and came back before 11:00 a.m. the next morning, and it wasn't even, school wasn't even in session. So we feel like this is being pushed too fast. We feel like too much is being asked for, and we feel like it's going to destroy our Developers have touted that this development is an asset to the community because the kids can walk to school. We've got, going to already have hundreds of commuters coming through our neighborhood to get to this new school. It's not that we don't want growth. We expect to see rural county-sized lots with single-family homes, not townhomes and 5.7 units per acre. That's what we expect, and that's what we would like to see in our community. All of our communities, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Linda Biesecker?
My name is Linda Biesecker. I live at 873 Kissed Road with my husband Bart, and our house is right next to the entrance of this proposed neighborhood. We moved to the area about two and a half years ago, and what drew us here were the large lots, the open spaces, and the lack of cookie-cutter neighborhoods. We looked in areas from Travelers Rest to Fountain Inn, and we settled on our home due to these factors. When we purchased our home, we knew that there was vacant land next to us, but we assumed that whatever was built there would be in the same vein as everything else around us, a single-family home or possibly several homes, not 225-plus homes. But you know what they say happens when you assume. We purposely chose this area because it was out of the city limits and was rural. We had no interest in being in the city of Greer and paying much higher taxes. If we wanted subdivision after subdivision and bumper-to-bumper traffic, we would have bought a home in Five Forks. The growth in the area and the time we've been here is staggering. Where's the planning? Where is the infrastructure? Where is the concern for the current residents? The housing market is cooling, interest rates are rising, and houses are not selling as quickly. We don't need to add more units for them to sit empty. I was driving down Abner Creek Road at about 4:30 one afternoon a few weeks ago. A deer came out of nowhere, 4:30 in the afternoon, and ran into the side of my car. The poor animals in the forest are being displaced and are running out of places to go. We don't need to develop every piece of land. We need to preserve our green spaces. Just because something can be done doesn't mean it should be. Can you cram 225-plus houses onto a small piece of property in a tranquil rural area? Yes. Should you? Absolutely not. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Kilpatrick?
Mark Kilpatrick, 149 Brammer Road. I'm not a resident of the city of Greer, and I'm here in opposition of AN 2214. My property, back of my property is going to be right adjacent to where this development is occurring. I'm going to have at least 21 townhomes running, from what I can gather, no more than 25 feet from the property line. I have a huge tree line there with trees that are 75 to 100-foot tall. They have talked about a privacy berm as part of the property, but if it goes forward, I'm very concerned that we're going to lose that tree line, even though it's on my property. We'll lose it because of the grading and the construction will damage the root system, and those huge trees which provide a great tree line will be lost to this development if it was to go forward. And yes, it just, there's 21 townhomes that are going to be running right along my property line, but, you know, they're going to be running along a lot of the neighbors' property lines as well, which will have a similar effect. The nearby roads, I mean, we know Kissed is going to be improved, Gin House is going to have to be improved, but there are also another nearby roads that, as far as I know, are not going, are not under improvement, and they are what I call the farm-to-market, the FM roads. And those roads which run off of Kissed Road, that's Greer-Pellam Road, Tandy-Wood Road, Nally Road, Babe Wood Road, well, Babe Wood kind of runs between Nally and Tandy, State Road 42-42-18, State Road 42-600. These roads all run off of Kissed between Abner Creek and 296, and they are narrow little country roads, and I see no indication of any improvement on those roads, and people are going to be looking at ways to get through that area quicker than they have been able to get through it in the past. So appreciate your attention to my information, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Catherine Woffel. I live at 199 Brammer Road, next to Mark. I sent you all an email yesterday, I believe. I did get one response, and the main thing I want to emphasize is safety. I have a 10-year-old daughter that I drive with on these roads. This is adjacent to the elementary school and the new middle school. There'll be many children transported on these roads. I would highly suggest, before you make a decision, if it's possible, to take yourself on these roads and see how safe you feel passing people, because it is near impossible to pass two cars next to each other, and I believe, even with the improvements, this is still going to be a problem. I agree with everything else that everyone else has said, but my biggest concern is safety. As it is now, I come to near-head-on collisions on a daily basis, and by the grace of God, I'm able to predict because I'm used to the roads, and I'm able to move over. But there's many people that are not used to these roads, and we're going to have issues. I'm telling you all that right now. So that is my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to thank you for not only your comments and your time this evening, but also the decorum that was observed during this proceedings, and would encourage you to stay for the discussion as we move forward in our meeting tonight. Having concluded the public forum, let's move on with our agenda. You have in your packets tonight the minutes of the council meeting from September 13th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion that those be received. Have a motion in a second. Any items noted for the clerk? Hearing on Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, as we have from time to time the opportunity to recognize those folks that are celebrating anniversaries with their employment with the city, we enjoy doing this and being able to recognize those folks that have reached milestones in their career with us, and this is a chance for us to give back to them in the form of some time off and also a resolution commemorating their time with the city. And so the resolution that we offer tonight is 1822. This is a resolution recognizing and commending the City of Greer employees. And whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Brianna Crowe has served in the Police Department for five years, Matthew Fields has served in the Fire Department for five years, Meredith Gola has served in the Police Department for five years, Derek Miller has served in the Building and Development Standard Department for five years, Danny Walker has served in the Public Services Department for five years, Thomas Kickler has served in the Fire Department for 10 years, Christopher Montgomery has served in the Police Department for 10 years, Brandon Preneau has served in the Police Department for 10 years, Joelyma Earl has served in administration for 15 years, Joel Galley has served in the Police Department for 15 years, Steve Owens has served in administration for 15 years, Michael Sells has served in administration for 15 years, Jody Norris has served in the Fire Department for 20 years, Randall Ballinger has served in the Police Department for 25 years, Perry Bowens has served in the Police Department for 30 years, and Scott Keely has served in the Fire Department for 35 years. And whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a duly assembled meeting wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service for which they have performed. It further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay. Approve this the 27th day of September, 2022. I'd like to ask our city administrator, Mr. Mayorman, to join me in the front, and as we call your name, if you would, please come to the front. We've got a large crowd this evening, but would ask you to stay here in the front on either side of us, if you would, for a group picture. Brianna Crowe.
Thank you, sir.
Meredith Gola.
Thank you.
Danny Walker.
Thank you, sir.
That's his audience. It's his and Lowe's. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Randall Ballinger.
Surprise they walk out. It's the sun. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Perry Bowens.
Appreciate it.
It's there. Yeah, it balances out just a little bit.
Scott Keely.
Who's in on that lecture, aren't you? Yeah.
Let's give these folks a big round of applause. Thank all of you. I think some of these folks must have started straight out of middle school. more often now with our count goes up, so we get to do this on a fairly regular basis, and we appreciate being able to recognize them. Counsel, you've got departmental reports contained in your packets this evening. Administrator or department heads will be glad to give you additional information in that regard. David Seifert joins us this evening for an overview of our financial picture.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring to you the summary financial report for the month, the end of August, 2022. At that time, we have revenue recorded of 1.3 million, expenditures that are 2% under budget at just shy of 4.9 million, and a cash balance of 14.3 million in the general fund. Referencing the benchmarks, we have a combined negative variance of about $214,000 for August of 2022. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have revenue that is 3% over budget at 580,000 with expenditures recorded of 39 million and a cash balance of 2.7 million. And then lastly, in the stormwater fund, revenue for August of 15,000, expenditures of 11,000, and a cash balance there of 2.2 million. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel? Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. Mr. Mayorman?
The floor is yours for your reports, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Want to first start off by congratulating council and our staff, along with our friends at Kenley Horn. Kenley Horn and the City of Greer were recently recognized for outstanding professional achievement for the Greer Station revitalization. The American Society of Landscape Architects presented Kenley Horn and the city with the honor for urban design on September 23rd, 2022. So we want to extend our congratulations to Kyle Baugh and his team at Kenley Horn, but also to council and all the folks on our staff that worked so hard over the years to bring that to fruition. So well done and well deserved. Reminder, October 11th, the City of Greer will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, the 11th, to accept input on redistricting. This meeting is scheduled at 6:30. We'll be in the council chambers here at City Hall. Let's see, the 43rd Annual Greater Greer Golf Open was held on September 24th to 25th at Greer Golf, so we're excited to see more and more tournaments coming to the golf course and enjoying so much of what we have to offer in our Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department. The Greer Arts and East Festival is scheduled for this weekend. Now, they have been saying rain or shine, and I think in their heart of hearts, they mean it. However, given the rain that will be coming on Friday and Saturday, I know that they are contemplating possibly canceling that, and there's been, I want to be clear, there's been no decision made of yet. So if you are interested in attending Greer Arts and Easts, I would encourage you not only pay attention to social media through the chamber, but also the city's social media because anything that they share, we will certainly share. So I believe by lunchtime tomorrow, a decision will be made. The food truck rollout will be Thursday, October 20th. It seems to be a great event here in Greer. And the artisan makers market will be Saturday, October 22nd. But like anything else we do, all these events and more can be found at cityofgreer.org, so mark your calendars. And one last thing I'd like to say this evening, on behalf of all of the employees of the City of Greer and the City of Greer itself, I want to extend our condolences to the family of Mark Harvey. He's a friend of ours with CPW. He was a friend of ours with CPW and certainly to all of our friends and colleagues with the Commission of Public Works. If you had the opportunity to work with Mark, you quickly understood how serious and capable of an engineer this man was, but he was just a great guy, too. And so for all of our employees who worked with him, got to know him, I had the pleasure of getting to know him these two years I've been here, he will be missed. So to his family and his work family at CPW, the city offers our condolences. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And I think I speak for Council in joining you and wishing the best for the Harvey family as we have all, I think, had some experiences at this table with Mark. He's always been gracious to help us in whatever way we ever needed and was an advocate for not only the commission, but the City of Greer, and will be sorely missed. And so we offer our condolences to his family. With that, then, we will, we will move to appointments of boards and commissions. This evening, the Accommodations Tax Committee, the Advisory Committee is before us again this evening, and Kenna McLarty joins us for that discussion. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening. On behalf of the A-Tax Committee, I am seeking approval for Hyten Patel to replace Board Member Sierra Jones. All contact information I have for Sierra Jones is no longer valid. Mr. Patel is excited and happy to better serve the community by joining this board. I have attached his biographical sketch for added information.
Counsel, that comes to us this evening with a recommendation from staff for your approval. I will entertain a motion to receive.
I will, and I'll second because he's a USC.
We don't need to do a little more background check, huh?
Did we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Motion and second floor is open for discussion. Further discussion at this point? Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Counsel, we'll move to old business this evening. The first of which comes before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 48-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by JMK Properties of South Carolina LLC located at 275 Genovale Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty joins us this evening. Any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 48-2022?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The only update I have is that Planning Commission held a public hearing last Monday evening and recommended approval.
Comes with approval from staff in the commission. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Motion to second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, the second and final reading of ordinance number 49-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by FRK Properties LLC located at 237 Genovale Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 49-2022?
Yes. Planning Commission also held a public hearing for this case last Monday evening and recommended approval.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Motion and the second floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 52-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by Edwards Road Investments LLC located on Gin House Road and Kissed Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of DRD for said property. In regards to ordinance number 52-2022, any newer additional information? Ms. Cotty?
Yes. Planning Commission held a public hearing for this case as well last Monday evening and recommended approval.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Floor is now open for discussion.
I will extend my thanks to all of you in the area that showed up for the meeting and also for the emails and a couple of phone calls that I did receive. I'm sorry, I did not respond back to very many of the emails. I saw them late and didn't have a chance to go through and respond to all of them. I certainly appreciate you coming. And I did run out into the area, and as many of you have expressed, there are very, as in most of our rural areas, very narrow roads in not great condition. I know this is Spartanburg County, and as they all stated, there were numerous subdivisions going up in and around. I was kind of overwhelmed by the number of subdivisions that had already grown up there and that were already filled up. And of course, there's grading going on in different areas for the others. And going down Gin House Road, there you do see the new construction going on for the new, let's say Riverside, or the new middle school that's going to go in there, right next to the elementary. So, yeah. It does look like narrow roads that need a lot of work.
And both Gin House and Kissed Road will be widened as part of the school project.
Ms. Cotty, can you tell us what your understanding is of that timeline on when that's going to happen?
I am not certain. We have spoken to the school district and the county who have confirmed that these projects will be taking place, but I'm not certain of the exact timeline. The developer may know better because they are going to impact their property a little bit, but...
I wanted to ask, can you confirm what date signs went out for this?
So they go out the Thursday or Friday, they're 10 days prior to the public hearing. So I believe they even went out early on the Thursday before, which is 11 days.
Before our first reading?
No, they go out before the public hearing at Planning Commission.
Got it.
While I did notice the one on Gin House was found in a ditch. Apparently a gun, maybe hit by a car.
Hit by a car, maybe? Okay.
I know that a lot of the people, they're not for the development, but a lot, and we're seeing it increasing, that so many in different areas are against all these townhomes. So I think sometimes the subdivision, maybe with the residential individual homes, is not so much the big issue as all the townhomes that keep popping up everywhere, especially in a planned subdivision happening. But I know that's happening a lot, that most of the, a lot of the subdivisions that's come before us lately have, you know, included single-family homes and then an array of the townhomes. So I think those are a lot of the complaints that a lot of the residents in the different areas have.
To that point, I would just say, you know, I'm a Gen X. I don't really get that trend, right? But I'm also not a real estate developer. I think most of us would agree, perhaps many who are in attendance tonight, when government starts getting into trying to shape the market and tell the market what it shouldn't, shouldn't offer consumers, I think the government can tend to mess things up in a way that way. And I feel like, whereas that's not, like, that doesn't compete with me, I think that's a market-based driven trend that we're seeing. You know, I drove out there again today myself. I drove through Saddle Brook, one of my neighborhoods, out that way. It's the same way, right? Single-family detached, mixed with nicer townhomes. These aren't, we'll start our, you know, cheaply thrown up units, but, you know, mid-to-high 200s. So, you know, again, I think that's the market doing what the market does, and I'm more inclined, from a product standpoint, to let the market drive, you know, what a developer knows a consumer is asking for where that's concerned.
I think I sometimes think of the townhomes as being more closer to the town rather than rural. You know, maybe wrong, but I know that there was some, I know we all get tired hearing climate change, but there was, did come up at one time where I think a lot of push was being made towards the townhomes to reduce the land, you know, the use of the land, to compact it more instead of like having your nice home with an acre or quarter of an acre or whatever. So I know a lot of that was brought up several years ago. But I still see the townhomes as being more in, towards the town rather than rural. You know, I don't know, because I think of young people and they want to be more in, I don't know.
The hard conversation that I've had with a lot of my constituents out there, whereas there are still pockets within our community that feel like it's in the country, you know, we're talking about, you know, it feels rural. I get it. I genuinely get that sentiment. It feels rural. But the reality is, the reality is, we're, what's the proximity to 85? What's the proximity to BMW? You know, this isn't a City of Greer thing. This is just, this is what is happening in our community where that's concerned. This isn't, this isn't the country. Even though it's a field, this isn't the country. This is, this is where people are coming to move. This is where development is happening regardless of whatever we do or don't do from an annexation standpoint. I am not unsympathetic at all to the emails that I got. I genuinely understand, as I've said repeatedly about other requests we've had come before us just this year, south of 85, from, both from folks who live inside the city as well as, you know, neighbors like you all who, you know, don't live within city limits. I want to be a humble listener. I always want that feedback, but I want you to understand that this is not an aspirational thing to grow for growth's sake. This is, we live in one of the fastest-growing residential areas in the country, let alone the state. And so our job, again, we're not aspiring to grow for the sake of growth, but we are aspiring to grow a community where people want to live. And a byproduct of that is people want to come and live here. And so I see our job, both for our direct constituents as well as you all, is to do everything we can to thoughtfully, to humbly, not kill growth, not stump growth, but to shape growth that, not that eliminates every objection, every, you know, piece of discomfort, but hopefully shapes it as wisely as possible for the future. I want you to know that I drove your entire area both before our first meeting, a few weeks ago. I came out and I drove the length of Gin House today slowly. I drove the length of Kissed, core down to Burns Road, and you folks that live on Bramer, you have a nice little piece of paradise there. I drove the entire length of Bramer. I understand it. Some of you have been there two or three decades. I totally understand it. I really do. Our job is to make sure we have a vote in what that development, what that growth looks like. And that's what I commit to you. We're going to do as good of a job as we possibly can, you know, as that does come, inevitably, speaking. But I understand every concern you shared.
I think one of the things that we, you know, as a student of growth and development for the past 20 years or so, is to understand, to your point, what's taking place in the market and the trends. Because one of the things that we have seen over the last several years and will continue to see is a mix of housing products. The single-family home subdivision with long streets and cul-de-sacs and limited entrances is very rapidly becoming a thing of the past for a number of reasons. Infrastructure costs are higher to develop land like that. Actually, a mixture of homes produces less trips, which is the main factor in the number of cars on the roads. It's not the number of people, it's the number of trips. And single-family homes generate anywhere from two to five times more trips per day than you will find in a townhome or an apartment. And it actually is better in that regard. It's better for extending sewer and water and all the kinds of things that help prevent sprawl, which this council has been dedicated to for the last 25 years. And so I know it falls on deaf ears sometimes that there are advantages to mixing types of homes and development, but we just need to realize that as we go forward, there is less and less demand for the homes on larger lots. It's just, you know, while this area still has plenty of room for that type of development, we're seeing it, we're seeing it less and less. And it seems to make sense for us to be attuned to ways that we can plan to most effectively serve our residents, and one of the ways is through the mixed housing. I always find it a little bit surprising as well, too, that this area seems to be such a well-kept secret. One of the things I was scrambling around doing just a minute ago on my phone was looking in the phrase, the golden triangle was, the earliest I could find was 2013 in the Greenville News. They predicted significant growth in that area, even to the point that they challenged the city on how we would handle that in that area. And back to Mark's point, we know for a fact, beyond the shadow of a doubt, that this area is going to continue to grow. How we handle that growth will determine what our legacy is going to be in many regards. And I think we've done an appropriate and a good job of doing that. I have no doubt that that area is going to continue to grow and develop rapidly. If you have any doubt that that area is going to continue to grow rapidly, all you need to do is get back out on 101 and drive down the road just a little bit. You will identify 2,000 new homes just outside of Woodruff there, if you've done a quick count on what's going on in the Woodruff area. And so, you know, I am sensitive to that area. For many, many, many years, on Tuesday nights, Thursday nights, and on Saturdays, I rode a bicycle in that area with a large group of people. Yes, some of those roads are narrow. I've been run off those roads. I've had horns blowing at me, and I've had things thrown at me. But one of the things that we've got to understand is that we are going to continue to grow, and we are doing our best to enhance the way we do that and to do it appropriately. It was brought up tonight, something about being forced into the city. Let me assure you that nobody in this room is going to be forced into the city. We have not done a forced annexation in the 22 years that I've been on this council, and I don't intend to start now. If you want to come into the city, you can, and if you don't, you don't have to. That's just simply not an option. We're not going to, we're not going to start forcing people to come into the, come into the city, at least not on my watch. And so while I join Mark in saying that it's difficult when people that don't look like you, don't sound like you, don't want the same kind of house that you live in, and you don't know, want to move near you, it's, it can be difficult to accept. But we are, we are doing our best to provide a variety of housing at different price points for all those that want to live in the City of Greer. Others?
You hit on a few things, and the golden box is one of them, but I'm fortunate enough to have been involved with the city since 1983. And so during that time period, the city, you know, it was a sink-or-swim kind of deal. And then the city started to grow, this prior to BMW. And one of the, one of the areas and directions it was growing was was down Highway 101 going, and, and we'd been projected, this was before any of us were on council, that it was going to cross I-85. And projections have held true. Um, and then BMW arrived, and a, a lot of things have happened, but, um, the, the term of the golden box, I think that was coined by Nan Lund Dean, who was the reporter. And when I came on council, she used to say, she used to ask me, she said, "What, what is your biggest concern? What do you think that, that you have to base your decisions around?" And I said, "Well, it's the growth. It's either growth or lack of." And since 2004, we've been in growth. Now, and some of the folks who have emailed me, I replied back to most, as, as many as I could, but I tried to relay to them that, um, one, these are not forced annexations, just like you said, and, um, the market is driving a lot of, a lot of, uh, the market is driving all of it. But our staff, uh, our council always takes so much information to make these decisions. This is not decisions, these aren't decisions that we take lightly. We understand about traffic. And if you go back and research the problems of our roads and not just here in Greer, but the entire state, is that roads never get improved until there is some kind of development. Um, and, and I'll hang my hat on that because that's, you know, that from state and counties and, uh, on down, that's, that's how roads in South Carolina have come to be in the condition they are. Um, and what is kind of funny about that is that we see the, the conditions of the roads, but yet when we're asked to pay for them in a state tax for our state roads, a lot of us oppose that for several different reasons. Um, but you can, but, but the community can be assured that whatever way that, that our council votes up or down, that, uh, you, you may not like the decision, you may love the decision, but regardless, a lot of thought and effort and study has gone in to the decision each and every one of us on this council will make.
I think you make a valid point as well, too. We memorialized that, that growth in our long-range plan in 2015. And, uh, if anybody wants to know more about what we were thinking at that point in time, nearly eight years ago at this point, um, we predicted that, that, that housing would, would extend all the way to, to Reedville Road, and, um, I think that was borne out by the fact that, uh, that developers were buying property in that, in that area for shopping centers and other opportunities based on that, on that growth. And while it may be a little bit slower than what they thought, I don't think they're disappointed that, that they, they bought that property, you know, 10 years ago essentially to, uh, to, to serve the, the need of a growing community. Further discussion? Comments?
Ms. Cotty, can you run back over the traffic study that was done? When that was done? And maybe help, help us understand that concern that was raised?
Yeah, I would maybe see if the applicant and engineer want to review that.
I appreciate that.
So we do require a traffic study for any development that's going to be over 50 peak-hour trips. Um, and then we do have third-party engineers or SC DOT, depending on if it's their roads that review those studies. Um, and there was a period of time this summer that they could not do studies while school was not out. So they had to, developments have to either do it while school's in, before it's out, or after two weeks after it started. So I don't know if, um, Mr. Jones, if you wanted to come speak to that. Um, but they did complete a traffic study as required.
Walden Jones, McCutcheon Engineering, 898 West St. John Street, Spartanburg. Um, we're the engineering firm in the project. Um, infrastructure consulting engineering performed a traffic study, I believe, looking at the date, do you remember exactly, Ramsey? I think, I think it was on October 21. 21. So traffic counts, I'm pretty sure they were done. DOT does not accept the traffic count that's done outside of school hours. So, um, that was, that was performed. Obviously, some questions were raised. We'll follow up with that with the traffic consultant. We hired him as a third-party engineer. Obviously, they go before city staff and use their third-party engineer as well, so they'll, right now, the improvements are Kiss Road, there's no improvements, no mitigation required based on the traffic counts, the existing traffic on Kiss Road. And Gin House Road, the, the work being associated with the school is actually doing all the mitigation associated with that.
Is that it?
You have a question about when the improvements would be done?
Yes.
Um, as far as Kiss Road, that's, that's up to the county. We ask, and they say it's coming very quickly. I do know on Gin House Road, a lot of that's dictated by the school. Like, they have to have their roads improved before they can open their doors. So that's coming much faster just because it's, it's dictated by the South Carolina DOT.
When are you targeting breaking ground?
Hopefully, um, second quarter next year.
And how long would you anticipate all the units being built? What timeframe would you anticipate all the units being built out over?
Like, just doing the, the groundwork or going vertical?
No, from, from first shovel turn to putting the last unit up for sale.
So 2024 build out.
So a couple of years, 18 months, 18, 24 months total for all units?
Comments?
I have one. So.
Question. Comments? Questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the second and final reading of ordinance number 53-2022. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by in between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and Edwards Road Investments LLC or its assigns with respect to capital improvements in the City of Greer and other matters related thereto. Ms. Cotty?
Yeah, so, um, I don't, I don't really have any updates. There were a few small red lines that took place between city attorney and their attorney, but no substantive changes, and that agreement was included in the packet.
What is that? And I'm interested, what does this agreement actually cover? Does it have the three acres or so that's?
Um, so our, so annexations in the City of Greer, um, within the past year, you know, we've instituted a policy of, um, annexation fees. Um, so we have development agreements for each. Um, so for this one, um, they will have a fee, which is 50% of the typical fee for, um, single-family, um, attached and detached, and then also the dedication of three acres of land to the city to be used for some sort of capital improvement or community benefit.
So for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor's back open for discussion.
And so to be clear, we're not giving them a break from what we've been doing. It's just modified in a way that we believe is going to be most advantageous for our residents with fee and the donation of the property.
Yes, sir.
For public use. I would just highlight with this, I would just highlight with this, this is one, by my understanding, why we're doing this, why we instituted this, this is one way that we are seeking to mitigate the effects of growth that we're seeing. To make growth pay for growth, uh, to make developers have skin in the game, uh, for some of the improvements that do have to happen over time, that don't just benefit our taxpayers, but that benefit everybody, uh, in our community. Um, these funds that we collect, they go directly toward, you know, along the way toward addressing the issues that are created by growth, the challenges that are created by growth. Um, so just to point that out about this item.
There's one down here. All for your agreement, is that all? Is that?
No, that's, that, yeah, that's.
Forget that.
The, the agreement included in the packet is the agreement.
Yes. Comments? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, items of new business this evening. The city paving and maintenance list for 2023. Mr. Grant joins us for that conversation. Mr. Grant, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and counsel. Um, in your package, you should have two lists, uh, one for the Greenville's, uh, side of the city, and one for the Spartanburg County side of the city. Uh, we'll review the Greenville, uh, side first. If you will note, the tan-colored PCI column, uh, PCI is the pavement condition index. It is a condition score from the evaluation we had completed by consultant in 2020. So this score helps us rank and prioritize the, the repaving of our streets. So depending on, uh, next year's asphalt prices, we should be able to fund the milling and overlay of the streets at the top of the page there with the light blue shading. It totals 1.41 miles. And also at the bottom of the page, we're planning 3.36 lane miles of crack sealing. And the total paving budget for the Greenville side, uh, is $464,123. That will be split between the city and then Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee. Um, are there any questions on the Greenville list before we move to Spartanburg? Okay. Um, moving over to the Spartanburg list, it looks very similar. You should see, we should be able to fund the three roads at the top in the light blue shading, a little over half a mile. And the bottom of the page, we're planning 1.65 miles of, uh, lane miles of crack sealing, uh, all in the Brookhaven subdivision. Uh, the total Spartanburg, our total budget for the Spartanburg side is $167,016. That'll be split between the city and Spartanburg County, uh, CTC. Any questions on the Spartanburg list?
What does S Y stand for?
Square yards. That's how they, that's how they price most contractors, by the square yard.
Counsel, the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor's open for discussion.
On the crack seal numbers, is that the traditional, or is that that new method we have been experimenting lately?
Not familiar with the new method.
You know, the different types that we were?
Reclamite. Oh, you're talking about preservation?
Yeah.
No, this is, this is crack sealing, although crack sealing is considered a preservation methodology. Um, most contractors in the local area don't do preservation like reclamite or HA5, but, but they do, uh, crack sealing. So we've got crack sealing in with the paving, uh, contract. I do plan to bring more preservation projects to you next spring.
Okay.
I'd just like to say thank you. It's a lot of my district.
Okay.
Comments? Questions?
So the, the PCI number indicates how bad it is?
Yes, sir.
So Dres Avenue is the worst running, according to this?
Uh, yes.
If that's the worst street we have, we don't have really bad ones.
Generally, we don't. You're, you're right. Compared to some of the roads in the state, we're in fairly good shape.
Yeah, the state roads, that's a different matter.
Yes, sir. Yep. That's why, that's another reason we want to use the preservation, uh, program, try to keep our good roads good, and then we'll keep milling and overlaying and repaving the ones at the bottom, so we can split the, you know, split the funds and, and hopefully stretch the dollars.
How much did you say it could extend the life of the roads by going that route?
Reclamite is about four to seven years, and that's, uh, it penetrates into the asphalt. It's used for newer roads, less than five years old. HA5, you typically put on any one to 10-year-old roads, and you get seven to 10 years of life extension out of that. I would note that these are estimated costs, so, uh, once we have bids and they're actually received, and we have actual, uh, costs, that'll determine how many roads we can pay, so we may actually pay one or two more or less than what's listed. No, sir.
Counsel, any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Accommodations Tax Grant Funding Program. Ms. McClarty joins us again for that.
Good evening. Once again, the Accommodations Tax Committee of the City of Greer respectfully submits the following recommendations to City Council for funding approval of applications for advertising grants from the Accommodation Grant Funding Program fiscal year ending in 20, June 30 of 2021. If, um, recommendations are approved, there will be a remaining balance of 51 cents, which would be available for future, uh, advertising promotion campaigns. Um, Greer Chamber Commerce is request, requested 20,000. The committee recommends to grant them 10,000. Greer Development Corporation requested 10,000. The committee recommends that they be awarded $5,765, $56, excuse me. Just to give you some background on the accommodation, um, tax program, 5% of the funds go to the general ledger. 65% of the funds are allocated for projects and events, and the Accommodations Committee meets and discusses those and recommends to council how those funds should be rewarded. Um, and then 30% is strictly allocated for advertising for organizations who have an existing and ongoing promotion campaign that promotes the city. These two organizations that submitted applications meet that requirement.
Thank you, ma'am. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Well, my, uh, my preference would be, excuse me, that we would flip-flop those and, uh, give the full 10 to Greer Development, and I'm not even sure about giving that to the Greer Chamber until we find out what they did with Family Fest.
You wish to make that a motion?
Uh, that's just my preference.
Okay.
I depend.
We only had two applicants?
Right now in the city, we only have two organizations that meet that requirement of existing and ongoing advertising campaign for, um, bringing visitors into the city.
Gotcha. Ms. McClarty, will we as the city be available to access ourselves to those funds with the new tourism division in our recreation department?
We will be able to access the 50, the 65%.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Others?
What's considered an organization?
Um, if you.
I mean, 501(c)(3) type or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Questions? Comments? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number 56-2020. This is an ordinance. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by B. Scott Streetman located on Van de Venter Drive from R12 Residential to R7.5 Residential. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please?
Sure, thank you. This is a rezoning request. Again, this is a single-family residential zone. They are requesting to go to a smaller lot size, single-family residential zone with the intent to split the lot from one into two. This is an aerial of the site. Again, it is at the corner of Pine and Van de Venter. The large corridor you see to the north is Wade Hampton. This is the current zoning map. The kind of peachish color that you see is R12, and then the fuchsia kind of pink color along the corridor is C3 Highway Commercial, and the red is C2 Commercial District. This is our future land use map. This is located within a traditional neighborhood that does border the pink suburban commercial. This is a screenshot from the county GIS system just showing an old lot line that was combined, and we only include it because there were emails and, to council and Planning Commission discussed the previous lot line. This is not something staff took into account to make this decision. This is primarily based on the future land use and the lot sizes around the area, proximity to Wade Hampton. This is a current street view of the site. Planning Commission, again, did hold a public hearing last Monday and recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Okay, record will indicate, so. Are you available for questions if any come, if any arise?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion. Second. And a second, floor is open for discussion.
So, the lots have essentially just flipped instead of being facing Pine. I know there's kind of a more challenging grade coming off of Pine, it would make more sense to flip them and come to Van de Venter.
Yeah, it's our understanding that the applicant hasn't decided which way he would split the lots, but he did indicate that there is a good chance that he may flip from the previous lot to front Pine instead. The first step at this point is just getting the rezoning to see if he can split the lot, but they have not proposed a survey with, with the line as of yet.
Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, the next item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 57-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Chris and Judith Harris located at 166 Bellamy Close from R20 Single Family to R15 Single Family. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a very similar request, again, a single-family residential zoning with a larger lot size of 20,000 square feet. They are requesting to rezone to R15, which is a 15,000 square foot lot size with the intent to subdivide from one lot into two. This is an aerial of the site. This property is located within the Mount Vernon Estates subdivision. This is a current zoning map. Again, the subdivision is currently R20. This is a future land use map showing that it is located in a traditional neighborhood community. And again, this is a screenshot from the county of a previous lot line that was, again, previously combined, and they cannot use the same lot line because we can't sign a plat that has non-conforming lot sizes. So, that is why they're requesting the rezoning. Again, that's, them having a previous lot split is not really part of staff's decision-making process. We, we base that based off lot sizes around it, proximity to corridor, commercial corridors, and where we see appropriate, but staff does recommend approval. This is a current street view of the property. Again, there is one existing single-family home on that, and they would be proposing to rezone so that they could have an additional lot with one additional single-family detached home. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing last Monday evening and recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you. You available for questions if they arise?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we receive ordinance number 57-2022.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for discussion.
Ms. Cotty, this is very similar to a property that we had on Oakdale, this was maybe two or three years ago, just right around the corner from this, and it was a similar situation. They were trying to fit in two lots on each side, and it wasn't exactly, like you said, it didn't go right in line with our traditional zoning, and so, um, we had this as R15, they've already built a house on there, and it fits right in with the neighborhood, and there's another one coming, and I see it very similar in this situation, too.
Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, the last item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 58-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Osage Capital Investments LLC located on James Avenue from RM1, which is multifamily residential, to OD. Ms. Cotty?
Sure, this is a rezoning request for one parcel. This is located on James Avenue, right off of West Point Set. Here's the aerial of the site. This is the current zoning map. The red color that you see along the Point Set corridor is C2 Commercial District. The purple color that you see is OD Office District. The darker kind of taupe color is RM1 Residential Multifamily, and then the remainder of the peach is R12 Single Family Residential. This is our future land use map. This is located in a traditional neighborhood, and Point Set, West Point Set corridor is also designated as a transitional corridor. This is a current street view of the site. It is the property immediately behind the existing parking lot. And Planning Commission did hold a public hearing last Monday evening and recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? You available for questions if they arise?
Certainly.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, floor is open for discussion.
Now, this is going to be all about the same, like the real estate company that's in front, is it all going to be the same property owner, is that what?
So, it will be the same property owner. It's my understanding that the real estate agent is a tenant, but yes, it is the same property owner as the OD property to the north.
And we know what, either what it would be useful and it being the same?
So, we don't have to have a site plan submitted with rezoning, but it is my understanding that they plan to do kind of a sister office and then utilize parking between the two, for the two offices. And I'm sure.
What kind of office do you have?
Um, I do not, but I'm sure the applicant would be happy to discuss that if.
If you'd like to come to the podium, please, sir. If you'll give us your name and address as a matter of the record, we would appreciate it. Did you hear the question?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
More information about our plans.
Yes.
I'm Christopher Hill, and I live at 105 Shore Vista Lane, which is not in the city of Greer, but is in Greer. As Ashley said, we were going to build a sister building, something that looks very similar to what's already there. We've hired David Langley to design that, and so, it's just a sister building of, that fits right in there.
I'm just wondering how much traffic or what would be involved or what kind of details or?
Sure, so, the office that's currently there that we own, we just rent individual offices to different companies, and so, one tenant right now is an architect from Chicago's. Their first office outside of Chicago, they moved to Greer and landed it at our office as a place to kind of start. We see that there's a need for people that want to come to Greer or work in nearby where they live. People don't like to work at home, despite what we all read, they like to have their stuff in a, behind a door, and so, that's what this office is. There's six businesses like that in our current office, and I would see something similar to that in the other.
Other questions of the applicant?
What did you say the red designation is on that?
Um, that is C2 Commercial District.
And the purple is?
That is OD Office District.
Gotcha.
Ms. Cotty, define for me what, what we talk, what we say is traditional neighborhood now. I know that that's kind of, it's probably in flux with the, the new development.
Sure, so, traditional neighborhoods in our comprehensive plan, those are those that surround downtown Greer and typically like the Wade Hampton corridor, and those are meant to be more interconnected opportunities for infill and have a mix of residential, commercial, and institutional uses. It does call for a variety of housing types, including obviously, single-family homes, up to small-scale apartments, townhomes, and neighborhood-scale retail. It does say that single infill development should be compatible with surrounding neighborhoods, and the primary uses are single-family, attached and detached, multiplexes, townhomes, and parks, and then secondary uses would be apartment complexes, civic and institutional uses, and then that small-scale office and commercial uses interspersed.
And that's the taupe color you were pointing, is that correct?
So, that is actually, this whole area is traditional neighborhood, and then again, the corridor is designated as a transitional corridor, and that is one that includes a mix of both residential and non-residential uses.
Somewhat off this topic.
Mm-hmm.
But, how would staff view, let's say, lot 214 or 212, if, if that was submitted for rezoning to other than residential?
Um, I think it would depend, because there's already some C2 across the street, it may be appropriate. I think it would just depend on the lot size, the one that's adjacent to the multi-family.
But, but if.
208 A, B, and C, we might consider it.
So, it's going to be, does that request or the zoning, does it meet that definition?
It is still in traditional neighborhood. However, you know, traditional neighborhood is still primarily residential. However, it is appropriate for small-scale office and retail to be mixed in there, so it's going to be a case-by-case decision. And given its proximity to the actual Point Set corridor, staff feels comfortable with this request, but I do think it would be very much case-by-case, if on any of the, the lots that are further into the neighborhood. This is, you know, a similar case came before us on Pelham Street where there was like a small flower shop, like we do see these types of neighborhoods, small-scale office and retail fitting in, and we do have standards that require screening against conflicting land uses to kind of protect the housing in the office and make sure that they kind of complement each other.
In, is it, it's, does it serve the neighborhood, right?
Sure.
Okay, and are we, I, I won't go into that because it's, it's off topic more, so.
Did you have a shot up there of, of just like a GIS shot?
Oh, sure, the aerial, mm-hmm.
There you go, thank you. So, there's, that's my recollection, there's no house behind there, right?
Um, behind.
If you go on back behind that property, there's not a house, is?
No, it is the backyard of, and actually, I believe it might be vacant. Yeah, it looks like that parcel may be vacant, but it is zoned residential.
Can you clarify, Mr. Hill?
Sorry?
Can you clarify if that's a vacant lot there?
I believe it, it looks vacant.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, would 214 qualify to build a house on, by itself?
Yes. Yes, it's, it's, it's zoned RM1, which is residential multifamily. I don't know the exact size of it, but just by looking at it, I can tell it's not large enough for a duplex or tri or quad, which are also allowed uses if you have enough square footage in that zoning district, but, um, yes, we would allow a single-family home. And because, if, if this rezoning were to go through, they would be required to screen any residential to non-residential, so they would be required to do screening along all of the property boundaries that would abut those RM1. The only one it wouldn't is the, the property to the north, the purple OD.
Does this current property meet our regulation in regards to parking numbers? And I'm just looking at the size of the lot, and I, I see a lot of obstacles when it comes to, he said, something similar to what they have now, that's like a 50 by 50 building, and then once you plot that on there with a 15-foot front yard setback, 20-foot back setback plus screening, I'm just curious how that's all going to play into this situation. So, I'm very apprehensive about rezoning this piece of property because I just don't, it's, it's a tight spot, so.
Yeah, I would maybe defer to the applicant to see if they have laid out the site. They are aware of the setbacks and screening requirements, but again, with a rezoning request, we typically don't require a site plan. I mean, we certainly advise on the challenges that they might face, and we have discussed that with the applicant, but again, if, if you're comfortable with that, I would maybe defer that question to the applicant.
Mr. Hill, do you have any additional information into a site plan or, or any additional information you might offer to us in that regard?
Sure, you're right, it is not a giant site, but we believe the building could fit in there. We would have to come back to the city about a parking plan and all that type of thing to make sure that our plan was acceptable to Ashley and, and, and the planning. I believe that our current parking lot has addition, has parking spaces that aren't actually required and aren't used, so I think I wouldn't have to totally park the new building on that site in there, but I believe the limit for the size of the building will be totally driven by parking. There's no, the reason I say sister, it's going to be a one-story building that fits in there. I think office actually allows for two-story, but there is no way that there'd be enough parking for that, and that would not be my intention. I work in that office, I live in the community. In addition to this project, I've served the community in many, any, many ways, and I would, I would want to do something that was positive for the community. This particular parking lot that we're talking about, I share it freely. With the Christmas parade, it's full of people in there. I've allowed a church to use it to park their shuttles, and at no time have I ever charged for, for that, and I would like to, to continue there. Inside the building, I've allowed the meeting, main meeting room to be used for financial coaching classes for free also. So, I totally see why a traditional neighborhood allows some office in there, you know, short commutes, and then there's just this asset that is there, and, and I feel like when it's not in use, I should share it.
Others, questions in regards to the building?
I believe parking would be addressed when you're pertinent, when they submit plans and things like that.
Will you have a, a proposed layout? Are you going to do this before the next reading?
I was not planning on having David do that before.
No site plan before?
If I need to, I will ask him to do it.
Well, I'm just curious, with setbacks and, and the amount of space for parking, I'm just curious, how you going to do this?
I've done my own, and it fits, but I'm not the expert, so I guess there's a chance I'm going through this. I'm going through this, and it won't fit, but I feel comfortable that...
You've done it with their counseling?
Yes, and, and using the setbacks and all the different rules and then with no, with no barriers.
Do you anticipate this having, I guess we're combining parcels here, would it have two addresses, one for the front building, one for the back?
My plan would be to survey it and put it as one parcel.
Now, does our ordinance address multiple buildings on the office district lot? Is that, is that acceptable to have multiple buildings on there?
It is acceptable as long as they meet all the other regulations. Yeah, they wouldn't necessarily be required to combine, but they could if they wanted to, to reduce site setbacks.
Now, do you anticipate this triggering a traffic study or anything?
I don't. We haven't, again, we, we base it off of peak hour trips, but just based on the size of the office that would likely be able to go here, I, I very highly doubt that it would generate more than 50 peak hour trips. But that would certainly be a consideration during our planning advisory committee. And once it got to the site plan level, we would, we would check that, and that would be a comment and a requirement before they submitted, first of all.
Now, on this particular road, do we have any other examples where we've kind of combined lots like this? I know this is a not-as-traveled street, such as like Memorial Drive where you get more cars, or Milton gets more cars. Because I, I went through East Point Set, I didn't see anything that was similar to this in nature, and I'm just curious how...
Yeah, I took a look, we, we spoke, and I did take a look at their, their rezonings over the last couple of years, and I didn't see any similar requests. There have been several along the Point Set corridor facing Point Set that have requested to go from residential to commercial or office and that, or live-work, and those have all been approved.
Okay. Yeah, because my, just my concern is that we start to creep, because this will be a, in my mind, a precedent set, and then we'll have creeping happen along past that Point Set corridor. So that, that's just my apprehension here. That, that's, that's a real situation that could occur.
That's what it's already designated as, is traditional neighborhood, and that's what Ms. Cotty defined for us, that is that traditional neighborhood does allow different zonings that, that can be, one of the things is it can be seen as, as serviced or, or something that is an asset to the surrounding community. So that's, I believe that's why it's, you're saying it's a case-by-case scenario. Because I do know you mentioned Memorial Drive. There are, on, on the corner of Memorial Drive and Point Set, there is, and I'm assuming it's either one lot or it's been a combination of two, but there's three separate buildings. But they're all serviced, you know, with the parking lot and everything by themselves, so.
And I, I understand what you're saying, but on a case-by-case situation here, you know, that lot turns purple, and then it's like, well, which way do we go on the next? Or where you look at what's around, well, it's purple all around, well, it might as well be purple, too. So that's just my, that's how I say creep, because you're just looking at that localized area, and it's easy to say, you know, well, it could go this way, and even Ashley was like, well, it could be this, it could be that. And, and in the future, that's exactly what's going to continue to happen. Well, it could be this, could be that, and then next thing we know, we got a whole block.
Sir, yes, ma'am.
Could I address this just a bit?
Yes, sir.
You know, right over here, we have commercial all the way going down the street here. And do you have my, I prepared a slide. You know, we have zoning, and we actually have kind of zoning, but we have other uses that are actually happening in a property. So I, I did a quick study of the area, the block that I'm in, plus the adjacent properties. And the white colors are the ones that are paying 4%. So these are residences that, you know, especially a single-family where the owner actually lives. The rest are all paying 6% in this area. And the blue is actually Greer CPW's office there. These three down here at the bottom, I'm almost certain they're rentals paying 4%. So this area is a traditional neighborhood. People live there, people work there, and it's, it's happening all around, even if the zoning doesn't reflect that yet. The rentals are businesses. There's a bed and breakfast on the corner. It's, I think it, I think it fits in, and I don't think it's beyond precedence, especially with the commercial, which is a much higher use going all the way down south.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, as a matter of clarity, this is an ordinance to change the zoning classification. There are other considerations in regards to the building. With that in mind, other questions, comments, discussion that would involve Mr. Hill? All right, thank you, sir, for your time. With that, Mr. Hill, before we proceed, I, I would, I would ask that you, you reflect on some of the comments that were made tonight. I know Mr. Langley is a busy man, and having him turn around a site plan, even a rudimentary one in two weeks, may not be possible, but I would urge you to have something before you come back before us again, if you can, please, sir, if that's acceptable. And in that regard, I will ask counsel, for the purpose of discussion, any more questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no items in executive session this evening. We stand adjourned.